I invite you to join with me in the congregation. Dear Lord, the month of May is a time of prayer for those that protect us. We pray and celebrate the veterans that have given their lives in order that we may live in a country of free speech and a life of our choosing. We pray and celebrate law enforcement and fire personnel that protect our community. Most importantly, we celebrate the Lord, our great protector, with a day of prayer, both for our nation, both here and nationally. Let us come together before God to show our unity in our country in a time of need for spiritual guidance, shown to us by our Creator. We pray in your holy name, amen. I want to recognize Cali County Community College President John Inmike for some comments.
Good evening. It's an honor to be before City Council. As you know, we are in the spring commencement season. And with spring commencement season comes a select number of awards that Stanley Community College offers to its students and also select citizens who have ties with Stanley Community College. Each year, SCC recognizes one of its former graduates with the Outstanding Alumni Award. This year's recipient, this is actually a family affair. This recipient is wife and his daughter are all graduates of Stanley Community College. Mr. Dexter Townsend graduated in 1988 with an Associate Applied Science Degree in Business Administration, while a student at SCC was active in student government and served as an officer in SCC's Phi Beta Lambda Chapter. At that year's PBL State Leadership Conference, he was one of the top five in the Future Business Executive Competitive Event. For the past 27 years, Mr. Townsend has been employed at Pre-Form Line Products where he's currently a production supervisor. His community activities include, or are numerous, as all of you know, but include representing District 1 since 2008 on the Almaral City Council, chairing the annual Martin Luther King Unity Prayer Breakfast, and being an active member of the Stanley County NAACP, Friends of the E.E. Waddell Center, and North Carolina Black Elected Municipal Officials. Dexter is a 1993 graduate of Leadership Stanley and has also been involved in such organizations as the Stanley County Arts Council, Men Making a Difference, and the Almaral Downtown Development Corporation. I'm getting tired now, but I'm gonna keep going. In 2016, Dexter was named as the Stanley County Citizen of the Year. In a Discover Stanley magazine article about that award, he credited his time at Stanley Community College and his involvement in PBL in making him aware of the importance of service and teamwork. It truly is a pleasure and an honor to present the Stanley Community College Outstanding Alumni Award to one of our most visible graduates, Mr. Dexter.
Wherever you guys want me.
Mr. Hazlitt.
Yeah, Dan Hazlitt, you need to be in that picture too. Let me have it, let me have your phone. Get it to where it is. Yeah, you need to be in that one too.
Can't see, but you're smiling with these glasses on.
Dan, that may not be perfect as you would want it, but there you go.
Wow.
Mayor, if I may ask?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, I gotta say that I'm overwhelmingly surprised. If I'd open that, I can let my wife and daughter keep suffering in this nation. But I'm indeed surprised here tonight. First, I want to thank God just for being the architect of my journey in life. And I want to thank Dr. Inmike, Mr. Hazlitt, first of all, for the nomination, the other faculty and members of Stanley Community College, the mayor and council. You all definitely have surprised me here tonight, and I'm humbled and I'm very proud. As Dr. Inmike said when he was reading some of the things that they said about me. I did get my start at Stanley Community College because many of you don't know my story. Whenever I was in high school, I would say that I was one of them hard-headed young kids that ran the hoes and didn't have a plan for what he wanted to do after he walked across that stage. But at that point, my mom, with this being Mother's Day, she told me, she was point-blank. She said, "You're not gonna sit in this house every day and do nothing." So therefore, since I hadn't applied for four-year universities and things of that nature, I matriculated to Stanley Community College. And to this day, I don't regret it at all because through that experience at Stanley Community College, even though me and my wife, we had the opportunity to go through elementary and high school together, it wasn't until we got at Stanley Community College involved with Phi Beta Lambda that we started, we started engaging more and more with each other. And 27 years, 28 years. See, I'm gonna get myself in trouble. 28 years later, we're still together, and this here is evidence also of our union. But Stanley Community College has been great to all of us, and I appreciate it. And as I said, I'm very honored and proud and thank you.
And Dexter, what you've got up is it almost occurred two weeks ago at our last meeting, okay? But we just couldn't get everything to fall into place, so thank you.
And we'll see you at graduation Thursday night to present the award here. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Dr. Inmike, Mr. Hazlitt, thank you very much for coming.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Oh, and they're even staying. What are these, the wife's still here?
They won't stay long.
They take half the time to take me, though. Moving number three, approval minutes, consider approval of April 49, 2021, regular and closed meeting minutes.
Leave approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to administrative reports, our minimum commercial code update is in your agenda. And Mr. Robinson is here. If you have questions, it has not changed much from the last report. He is still in the process of doing the asbestos testing and moving forward. Anyone have a question for Mr. Robinson?
No, I'll just say that I asked that this be placed on here because I had been asking Kevin about particularly that issue. I had had someone ask me about the issue at Spade Road and 740. And I, in order to, I mean, we've got a neighbor that was asking me, so I wanted to find out what was going on. And when Kevin sent this to me last week, I said, probably council needed to know where we were because we had just recently had a residential update. And I thought that we probably, particularly since Tony is here doing his work here, that we probably needed an update. And I would, I'd like council to know what was going on, particularly with those two properties.
Thank you. Any further counsel? Moving on to municipal calendar, senior agenda, anyone have any questions on it? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Number six is a resolution for legal work for economic development project. This is same gentleman we have used sometimes in the past. We need to adopt a resolution to use him for another project we have moving now and make another future project in the future. Number seven, we had intended to set a public hearing for May 17th to consider renaming Rebel Road to Salvation Way. We had discussed that at the last meeting and did not take a vote on the public hearing. But I see they questioned today, and they have asked us to delay that to the June meeting so someone from Virginia could come and speak about this that owns property on that road. So we would plan to do that on June the 7th if council is so inclined.
So number seven needs to be amended from May 17th to June 7th.
June 7th. Number eight is consider approving a resolution opposing HB House Bill 401 and Senate Bill 349. Number nine is letters of two appointees to the state governmental positions. It's a letters of appreciation. And if council have any questions on the consent agenda, if not, I will entertain a motion. Just please include the May 17th to June 7th in there.
Move approval consent as amends amended from May 17th to June 7th.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Louder. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under new business, number 10, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 City of Almaral Budget. Mr. Ferris.
Thank you. Hot off the phrase.
So Mayor of City Council, I'm pleased to present for your consideration the fiscal year 21, 22 City of Almaral Budget. My budget letter is also in the handout. And before I discuss the proposed budget, I'd like to take a few minutes to recap some of the positive things and accomplishments of the current fiscal year. In this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, we'll be able to fulfill our financial obligations and end the year with adequate balances and in some cases, increasing in our major funds. We have many accomplishments to be proud of. First of all, we received very strong audit report. We also received approval of our third certified annual financial report from the GFOA. This is an excellent reflection regarding staff's professionalism and competence in managing the financial operations of the city. This is something we now expect because it occurs every year, but it's something that should not be taken for granted. In the police department, we've acquired six new vehicles and now have a vehicle assigned to each individual patrol officer fulfilling a top staff priority. We also completed the police headquarters construction project at the Tommy Manor and then budget. In Parks and Recreation, there was a major adjustment to their operations due to the impacts of COVID and found new and innovative ways to serve our community, such as the Remote Learning Program Program at the E.E. Waddell Community Center. We also had a multi-department collaboration project to utilize existing infrastructure to create a downtown walking system. In public works, we saw the increased general fund contribution to the annual street maintenance and preservation efforts. In the fire department, we purchased new SCBA equipment, purchased expatation equipment for every engine, and made improvements to all three stations. In planning and community development department, we initiated and completed an overhaul of the city's residential land use regulations to allow for more efficient and affordable uses of property and provide for opportunities to keep pace with best practices in development. In utilities, we continued with the electric pole inspection and replacement program, received the Public Power Award of Best Looks in four different categories, and were awarded the highest level designation from the American and Public Power Association for System Reliability, all while once again being able to reduce electric rates. In the water division of the utilities department, we did close out the Phase 2 INOD project, which also included some electrical rehab at the wastewater treatment plant. In economic development activities, we saw the project facilitate new job creation and investment at ARIA, saw the partnership and work of the city, saw the partnership and work of the city result in the opening of the downtown Fifer Campus. Construction has begun on the Almaral Hotel Project by the developer of the city located and brought to the community. We also have engineered plans and are now seeking bids for the Almaral Business Center construction, and we've seen significant retail growth that benefits all residents of the city and Stanley County by creating jobs and preventing leakage to other communities. Most significant achievement is that we were able to protect ourselves against the uncertainty of COVID-19, all while continuing city operations. We had no choice but to continue to provide police, fire, electric, water treatment, wastewater treatment, landfill, and other services while we overcame the challenges of keeping ourselves and our customers safe. Unlike other jurisdictions, we did not find it necessary to reduce critical services, cancel capital initiatives, or lay off employees. None of these drastic measures were required due to strong financial planning, excellent budget management, and teamwork. So that's a recap of some of the highlights in the current year. Now for the proposed budget. Each year is quite a challenge for fair budget for what's arguably the most diverse and complex operation in Stanley County. I'm still able to present a budget, a balanced budget that allows us to meet our financial obligation and continue to provide services to citizens that citizens expect while accomplishing a significant portion of goals and priorities from our many hours of strategic planning. A few highlights of the proposed budget, starting with the general fund. The proposed budget does have a proposed reduced tax rate of 61 cents per $100 of assessed values. With this being revaluation year, we are required to provide revenue neutral property tax figure. A tax rate of 58.04 cents would move existing property tax revenue minus growth and statutory exclusions to approximately 2017 level. Putting taxes into perspective and what do your taxes pay for? The police and fire department alone in this budget utilize the over 100% of all property taxes collected by the city. To put this in perspective, we would need a 28-cent property tax increase to fully fund the police and fire operations with property taxes alone. There is no recommended increase in the solid waste disposal fee, but there is a small adjustment in the solid waste collection fee, so the rates will continue to be self-supporting. Also, there is no proposed change in vehicle registration tax. Major initiatives in the general fund in the proposed budget include the purchase of a frontline engine in the fire department, refurbishment of our existing ladder truck, and we are seeking a safer grant for three additional full-time firefighters. The budget also proposes an increase of $75,000 for street maintenance, preservation, and repair initiative. This combined with $25,000 of additional funds in the POW bill provides for $100,000 increase in this year's budget. The budget does provide funding for the replacement of the roof of the Divin Center, which was on the building when we took over the facility, new diving structures at city pools, and we also have funding for the next phase of the Streetscape Master Plan, which is the implementation of wayfinding recommendations. We will continue our partnership with retail strategies, in-house curbside electronic collections and recycling services, and will strengthen our information technology infrastructure as well as many other annual activities. In the POW bill, there's the aforementioned $25,000 increase for street maintenance and preservation, all while POW bill funding levels remain equal to their 2010, 2011 levels. In the water and sewer fund, there is a 4% water and sewer rate increase, which is necessary to pay for existing debt, current commitment, capital needs, and to maintain service and compliance. We also have the first proposed water and sewer tap and meter fee increases in over a decade. However, major initiatives in the department are significant. There is the complete replacement of the Moss Springs Road Water Booster Pump Station that was installed as part of the city's 1980 annexation project, system expansion project. We also plan to replace the pumps at the North Carolina Highway 73 Sewer Lift Station and install a larger holding tank that should lessen the opportunity for overflow and reduce pump and haul activities by city crews. We have increased funding for automated meter reading meters, continuation of in-house inflow and infiltration work, and also $49,000 payment to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for water line relocation costs associated with the state's bridge replacement project on Bethany Road. In the electric fund, it is proposed a 1% electric rate decrease. This marks the seventh consecutive year with no increase in rate. In the last six years, this means electric rates will have decreased by 10.5% for the average residential customer, and I think that bears repeating. The average residential customer with this proposed 1% electric rate decrease will have seen a 10.5% electric rate decrease in the last six years. Major initiatives in the electric system and electric fund include moving infrastructure underground on South Street at the intersection with MLK and South Street. We also continue work to improve the electric system toward the Almaral Business Center, which will also benefit customers on the southern sections of our electric system. We have a continuation of the pole inspection and replacement program, and overall, there's increased funding for supplies, material, and equipment to keep pace with the demand unprecedented residential development and steady commercial growth that we are currently experiencing. In the landfill fund, there is no proposed tipping fee increase nor any change to the $1 per ton fee for closure and post-closure costs. We do plan to purchase a new dozer for the landfill and rebuild existing landfill compactor that should add five to seven years of life to that piece of equipment. We also have additional funding for closure and post-closure costs budgeted this fiscal year. Across the board, the budget does propose implementation of the compensation study recommendation, which also provides elements to address compression issues. It includes provision that all employees will move to market recommendation or at least 1.5% in order to keep pace with the ever-increasing cost of living. We are also moving into our fifth year of being self-insured for health insurance. We will set our rates at 3.17% higher in order to keep pace with rising costs, and we will continue to fund 100% employee health insurance costs. Copies of the proposed budget will be made available to local media tonight, and copies for public inspection will also be made available through the city clerk, on our website, and at the Almaral branch of the Stanley County Library. I do want to thank the mayor and council and staff for the many hours of support in setting the city's goals and priorities that have provided focus to the development of this budget. I want to give a few thanks to retired Finance Director Colin Conroy, Assistant City Manager Nicky Marty, Assistant Finance Director Jacob Webel, and interim Finance Director Sarah Richards for their work and input during the budget process. I specifically want to thank Nikki for her help with operations throughout the year. Finally, all department heads for their work being collaboratively the support of each other in their request and the support of me as I developed the budget to serve the best interest of the city and our citizens. So my final request is that the mayor and city council please consider setting a public hearing for Monday, June 7th at 6:30 to consider the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 Almaral Budget.
Counsel, you now have the budget for your review. Our work sessions are scheduled for May the 18th and 19th at 4:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Anyone have any questions about those dates? I know we had to go a little later than normal. I think we had some conflict when we set those. Any comments or conflicts with those two dates? Here and now, I entertain a motion that we set the public hearing for June the 7th. Motion by Councilmember Counsel, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion?
And it is within our rights to be able to have a public hearing and to approve it on one vote, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And if we've got, so any questions about proposal or what may be in or not in this, we ought to just wait till May 18th or?
That would be my suggestion. Michael will be giving us another presentation that night that may answer your questions in his presentation, and if not, they give them to him and he can give them back for the next night.
Okay, that's what I'll do because I did not see anything within this about a public information officer. Is there one included or not?
There, I can't cover everything in the presentation, but there is some funding available for PIO activities, yes.
For activities, but not necessarily for a person. Start, I'll hold back the, you've answered it, okay.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 11, consider setting a public hearing for a voluntary annexation of 1.15 acres on Anderson Road. We can set that public hearing also for June the 7th.
Subway.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Resolution 21-10 to annex Anderson Road and set a public hearing for June the 7th. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, discussion of May 25th Council of Governments Meeting. You have your comments beside of your desk tonight from the other officials. This will be before the June 1st official opening up by the governor. Counsel, we can do what you so desire.
And I'd like to do it would be like the 25th or such of May, isn't that correct?
25th of May, yes.
You know, I would, I would like to propose that we have it outside, maybe have it at Market Station in the covered, I mean, not out in the, not inside the station, but outside in the covered area, and do a, provide a box meal and have some, you know, we've got several folks that have got some ideas of some, of some issues to be, to come up or topics for discussion. I think we go ahead and do it because if it's like any other time, some, some folks and some municipalities aren't going to show up wherever, whenever. And we've got to start it at some point. Like I said in an email, it would give us an opportunity to do it, to get it started, to highlight and to be out in the market station and get things back out. You know, for the most people, they know they don't want a Zoom meeting and know they don't want a virtual meeting, but yes, they might come if it were a in-person meeting. There's plenty of room down there for us to spread out six feet apart outside. So I would propose that we do that.
The only thing we'll have to work out at Market Station is tables and chairs. We bring them out, staff would not pick them back up to the next day, and that would be when farmer's market is going on. But that would be an issue unless we pay overtime for them to come back and get the farm tables and chairs that night because they come from the warehouse.
They wouldn't come from inside?
Why, why you can use the ones on the inside?
That's right.
You can go to ADDC and ask them. They do not invite, take the inside tables.
I was just going from inside that, but I mean.
They do not, they not currently allow the inside tables to go outside.
I think we can get over that, Mayor. The ADDC, though, people, it's an entity upon itself, it is still a city, it gets city money and we fund it. So I say that we can do it. But I think that.
Who's gonna move them in and out?
Well, you know, when we've been at the, when we've been over at the senior center, we've done it.
Well, the law of counsel is agreeable to stay and do that because if we're gonna leave that, we gotta pay somebody to come back in and put them up.
That's on a Tuesday night, right?
It is.
And if it wasn't for the market, the farmer market next day, we wouldn't be there.
Well, I wouldn't want to leave them out there, particularly if ADDC doesn't like it. I'd rather us put things back how we found them that night anyway.
Would you use the tables and chairs? Would it be a necessity to spray those after being used for COVID? It should be, and I do not know if we have the equipment to do that. We could get a pump-up sprayer to do it. If you do that, alternate the equipment and the product to do that. I think you can chime in because I don't think I'm gonna be able to be there anyway. But food, you're gonna have to have a pretty large and fast firm number of people. Are you on 10?
We always, I mean, we always have more food. People say they're coming, they don't come.
People say they're coming, they don't come. We always have way too much food.
Well, since you do it boxed, we would like to have a sunblock, sunblock post camera.
Absolutely, but there again, you know, it's going to be the same situation with food. We'll probably have boxes left over.
So if council goes forward with it after the meeting, I'd like to hear suggestions of any folks you know that do the boxed lunches, not just a buffet, but I'm understanding council is wanting prepared, prepackaged, not necessarily packaged food, but individually boxed food. If you let me know, that'd be great.
I'm sure that whoever does ours for the, for staff meetings and that kind of thing would do a box just as easy. I mean, I would think, I would, I think there's, yeah, I think that, I mean, find.
Further comments?
I think if we need to figure out though, what the program is going to be. Peter's got some wonderful ideas there, topic suggestion for meeting repurposing old buildings. There's some great topics on there.
I think if we do meet, we need to kind of keep the topic somewhat minimized, like to the American Rescue Plan or something. That's affecting all municipalities, you know. I think we, as a council, had previously discussed that even when we was juggling around the last time, whether as far as making the decision as to whether or not we were going to meet, so.
It's a great idea.
All right, I'll entertain them. So I already have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Hughes. Okay, all in favor say aye. Number 13, information budget workshop set for May. Again, as I just mentioned before, we will hold our budget workshops on May 18th and 19th at 4:00 p.m. here in this building. Coming around the table, I'll first say, I had a U.S. Conference of Mayors call this afternoon, and the topic was the rescue plan. They hope to know by the middle of next week, everybody should know what is going to be allowed. It was a very interesting call, because a lot of people have a lot of thoughts on that money that they're all speculating on right now, because we do not know the guidelines from the IRS. So be curious to see what we get from them, so we know what we exactly can use it for and cannot. Mr. Townsend?
I'll be very brief. Just want to kind of acknowledge our fire department for some, I was looking at their social media page, and I seen they've been doing some night, nighttime training, I guess on some of the larger buildings in the city. I was, I think it had them doing some training on at the Alamo Hotel, as well as the Fife Building. Not sure if that's something that they've always done, but it was kind of good to see it on social media and make the general public aware that such things do occur. And also, just want to thank, I guess, the pastor and members of the North Alamo Baptist Church. I seen on the police department page today where North Alamo Baptist recognized and honored all our police department with a meal, I think, within the last week or two. I don't recall the date, but.
Last Friday.
Last Friday, all right. Just want to thank them for doing that. That's it.
Mr. Hughes?
What's on, man?
Mr. Ferris?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Hall?
Couple of things to piggyback on North Alamooral Baptist. They, they, with their new minister, they're really wanting to do a lot of stuff, because they contacted, and I think they're going to be downtown this Saturday with a table of their own, handing out something at our event that's going on downtown, which will lead me into this whole weekend. The Saturday is the Cruisin' that Tiffany is doing, and we're also through Special Events or ADDC, they've got a band downtown right on Cloudy that we hear that evening. They're going to be vendors set up throughout Alamooral all Saturday afternoon, and I believe that North Alamooral is going to be one of the ones that's going to be there. But there are a lot of things. I think they've got 20 or so vendors going to be downtown in some form or fashion on Saturday afternoon. Back up to Thursday evening, Thursday evening, there's going to, I think there's going to be some things going on on First Street down with Peter and his beach run, some things going on that night, as well as the very first music at Market Station. Thursdays at Market Station will start this Thursday night, and I know Lisa is watching, and I don't have a time. Lisa, if you're watching, send me a text as to the time. I'll report that. I think either 7:30 or 8:00 when that music starts. So that's taking place on Thursday and Fri, Thursday and Saturday, and then Friday night. Thank you, Lisa. So Thursday night, all of the music at Market Station, starting this Thursday night, and every Thursday through about July will start at 7:30, and those are local, local entertainers. May 7th, which is Friday night, is our Food Truck Friday at City Lake Park, and the entertainers will be, the entertainers will be bringing music. We, I think probably, there are probably 12 vendors, including some beverage vendors that will be there that evening. So, and the music will start at 6 o'clock. Windstream is our premier sponsor that night. When I say premier, they have put a pretty penny out to take care of the band that night, and are also, it will be a premier sponsor, I think, in October, September or October, but they are a premier sponsor for this coming Friday night at Market Station, I mean at City Lake Park. Apart of, for City Lake Park, I've got something I want to throw out, and I just want you to think about it. Someone in the community asked for PR, and Martha, it might have come from you, about the reverse 911, how we send out, can you help me start that, and then I'll tell, see?
I've had individuals come reach out to me and say, oh, I didn't know that was happening or that was occurring, because they either missed it on social media, or they don't get the paper, or they don't hear the radio maybe, or something. So they suggest, the individual suggested me, why don't y'all use your reverse call and send out, you know, messages on events you're having or hosting? So I mentioned it to Martha Sue, and.
So, there's pros and cons on that, and I just would throw it out to city council, what your thinking is?
I would say throw it to the committee that handles 911 and let them decide.
Who is that?
There's a group of chiefs and firefighters and fire chiefs and all that have the committee that talk about 911 issues. I have a problem using a 911 emergency notification system for something like that. Now, we've used it for smaller areas like the, around the school here to let them know that we would be closing roads, but I would rather they make that decision than us.
And who cares that?
We'll let the 911 director handle that. Chief Doolittle can get them to make that decision.
Okay. Is that, what about other council members' thoughts? Because it.
I guess, you know, this was brought to me, so maybe, I mean, what is the purpose? I mean, why do we have that system? I mean, I understand we got to allure people on certain things, which, is this used when we have an amber alert or a?
It was originally put in for emergency messages. Now, I've seen it get a little spread further than that than it was all those years ago. It originally put in to do emergency measures, like you talked about, amber alert or silver alert or things like that. That's what original intent was. Now, I've seen it do a little bit further than that now.
Okay. I mean, I just don't see why it couldn't be used to perhaps tell our folks some things that are going on, but that's just my thoughts, but what are other council members?
And if you're looking, are you looking just the city, or you want to get wider than that? We only have capabilities of doing the city.
That's all.
If you're going to do beyond the city, you have to let the 911 do it.
No, hold on, this is just the city.
I don't remember the last numbers. I want to say it's like 4,000 that people signed up in the city.
I think there's nine, I think it goes to 9,300.
It seemed like it was done a couple of years ago. Well, it might have been prior to even Lisa getting here. For some reason, I'm thinking to, to Elvis event or something several years ago, they'd done that, but I'm not saying, well, none of this is a good thing. I'm just wondering, I don't know, the mayor got a good point. We might be opening up a can of worms, you know, every event that we think is worthy in the city, you know, that people start getting that message on their phone when they normally only get it during emergency situations.
I think I brought out some opinions of, yeah, folks that deal with that a lot, because occasionally it's good if you do it on lots of things that might lose its impact. I don't know, I've dealt with it, so.
And that was the thinking originally, that if you do, did it all the time, people wouldn't think, wouldn't think about getting a call, would listen to it, to be honest with you.
Feedback from.
I think we just turn it over to the committee, let the committee decide. I'm assuming they're still meeting. I can't even tell if they are.
I'm pretty sure, because I don't remember, when was the last time you got a call?
I get an amber alert or silver alert once in a while.
So we do it, and we send the 911, so I imagine that's throughout the entire county, right?
They can restrict, they can restrict the tier.
Yeah, but then I would imagine that we start it, then the 911 people start having to do it for the residents only in Norwood or Locusts or something of that nature.
Norwood has, okay, so Norwood has its own that they have used and that they use occasionally for things.
Not going through the 911 system?
It's just like ours, okay? They have it on their own, and I have, I have, I'm not sure when their last one went out. Ours in Alamooral is actually housed with Anita, was it Anita? At your, at the police department. That's where, I mean, she's in charge of getting it done for, for anything in the city of Alamooral. So, but yeah, Norwood has used it. They used to do it for, for their.
Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, and they've done it whenever the water's out and that kind of thing, or they have a break, but, well, so if it's, at this time, it doesn't look like we'll be able to do it for this week, for this week's, because if so, it would need to go out Wednesday or Thursday, and by virtue of having to go through a committee and all that kind of stuff, it looks like it's null or void for this week.
We'll leave it with the chief, and he can talk to the director and say what they
We all, each of us received a letter from the auditor probably about six weeks ago. I know the mayor sent us a follow-up, but each of us got our own. I would just remind folks that, again, the auditor works for the elected body, and whether it's a nonprofit or a, or the city, I think we owe it to the audit committee or the auditor. If they send us something, whether or not we know anything or suspect anything, it's my opinion that we answer that.
She was responding back to mine immediately.
Oh, I know. Mine too.
If you didn't get a response back.
That's right. So, but anyway, so I just would remind people though, that they do, the audit comes back to us. Lastly, I hope everybody has seen the charters of freedom outside, and we're the, the brick work has been done, probably today put a stop to some things, but it looks great. You may know that since we've lost, Mike Unruh is our, now is our contact for charters of freedom, and he is going to be in town on the 27th. So an email went out today for our next committee meeting, and we hope to set the dedication date on that day. If you want a brick, get a brick. It's on our website, form is on our website, and I believe that's it.
Mr. Dry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitley. Oh, excuse me, it's Louder. It's Louder, excuse me.
Nothing.
Mr. Whitley.
As you have. Congratulations to council member Townsend to get the recognition like that from the bottom of the lot is pretty impressive. The only other thing I would say, the employee took out on 12th, just wanted the mayor to know that I messed up, and well, maybe not messed up, but I committed to help with the Rotary Golf Tournament that same day at the same time, so we're going to be there earlier doing what we have to do, so I will try to get a part of it, but if I'm not there, you know, that's what's going on with that.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we go into closed session for setting the North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 4 and 6 for economic development and personnel. Motion by council member Dry, second by council member Louder, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Second by council member Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming out of closed session, I'll entertain a motion that we set a public hearing for June the 7th for a economic development agreement for Project Phone. Motion by council member Whitley, second by council member Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion by council member Dry, second by council member Whitley, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.[1772.41][1772.41]